Okay, we should be live now. We are live, Mayor.
I'm gonna give it just a couple of seconds, so people can tune if they want.
Well, there's eighty-one viewing, they're tuning in.
Yep.
Yay!
Alright, I'm just gonna give us a little bit of pause as we let people give in, because I know there's a lot of people contacting me and they said they wanted to see online, I want to give them the opportunity to do so. And then Alan, this will be available for viewing later today or at any point in time, it'll still be up on the city's Facebook page, that's correct?
Facebook and, yeah, YouTube, yes.
Facebook and YouTube, alright, thank you. Alright, it's two oh four. I'm gonna, I'm gonna get the meeting started. On officially called to order, the special council meeting of Thursday, November nineteenth. Clerk, can I please have a roll call?
Councilman Vinear?
Here.
Councilman Cassidy?
Here.
Councilman Marshall?
Here.
Councilman Oris? Can you turn your volume on, please?
Here, thank you.
Mayor Alano?
Here. If you will please rise with me wherever you're at for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Alright, we're actually gonna do two portions of visitors' comments, I know there was a lot of people who were interested in this meeting, and that is a good thing. We did want to place some visitors' comments before the ordinance, because that was one of the things requested, and we will potentially take some afterwards. I do want to note, if I can pull my files over here, for the record, that I do have a stack of comments that were emailed in. Normally, we do not say comment via email, but due to the fact of the coronavirus and the limitations, we wanted people's voice to be heard. So I'll be reading some of those into the record a little later and talk about, talk about those. I do want to note that I am in the council chambers, I'm the only council member in the council chambers, I do have three members of the public and one member of the media here. So if there are people who want to come to City Hall and speak, there is, there is available. Alright, I'm gonna talk a little bit about the layout of the meeting. First of all, I want to thank all of those of you who are attending or watching online, or who came in person. We genuinely appreciate active and involved citizens in our local government. That's not just me saying that, government works better if people are involved, and if those who are leading and have been elected to make decisions are listening. So again, I'm not just saying that, I like to see an involvement, there are a lot of heavy topics going on in the world right now, and governments need involved citizens to, to work properly. I do want to talk a little bit about the process of today's meeting. So first, we received sample language based on state statute that has been distributed to the council and to the public. I want the public to know, many of whom are rightfully alarmed, as are some members of the council, of some of the parts of the language. This was sample language submitted to the council, some of you are reading it around the same time the council was reading it. So part of the legislative process is we will be taking a look and deciding not just do we want to pass anything at all, but are there parts that we want to take out? That is all part of the normal legislative process, and when it's open and public and transparent like this, the public gets to see that in action. So I don't want anyone thinking that the language of this ordinance was written here locally, written by the council, or even written by our local city attorney. It was not, this is the council's first look and discussion on the language, so I want to make sure people understand that. You know, as an example, one of the things that I received a lot of comments on was language referring to the Second Amendment. I can assure you after talking to some of the council members, that's a perfect example of one of the things that we would immediately strip out. I'm a veteran myself, I'm a strong Second Amendment supporter, if I were ever to issue an emergency order, I am more likely to tell you to go out and get trained in how to use a gun and to own one than I am to tell you you can't buy one. And that is not an understatement. But those are things that I think when you first review the sample language, you're not necessarily gonna know, and people are understandably gonna want to get involved and make sure we're doing the right thing, so thank you for your involvement. Before we get into discussion of the ordinance and to the other parts of public comment, we are gonna hear from our local hospital and from our local health official. Throughout this pandemic, including the spring surge, our community has been protected geographically and through good habits, I believe, in many cases, from the worst of things. Some of us, including those on the council, have publicly opposed the governor lumping us in earlier in the pandemic with Chicago and matching some of those exactly to what was happening in that region. We have been very focused on Dixon, what is happening in Dixon, what is happening at the Dixon Hospital. We understand we are part of a bigger world, and what happens in Rockford or Chicago or the Quad Cities, even into Wisconsin and Iowa, people travel. We understand that much of this is a group effort, but we also understand that we are not Chicago, we are not Wisconsin. And so earlier in the pandemic, you did not hear us banging the drum quite as loudly as, say, leaders in Chicago about the state of the healthcare system or things like that. Now, due to outbreaks at Dixon Correctional Center and Dixon area congregate living, as well as a much higher level of community spread, the pressures on Dixon specifically are different than they were at any point in this cycle. And to help us understand that, I want to, I want to invite David Schreiner, who's the CEO of our own local KSB Hospital, to give us an update and a little presentation as part of our public comment on the situation at our local hospital. So David, with that, I want to turn it over to you, I want to thank you so much for taking your time out of what I know is a very hectic period, full of incredible logistics, to let your community and the city council get a better grasp of what it looks like now and how it's different, maybe.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to the council for your continuing partnership and for your care and concern, not only for the citizens of our area, but also for the employees of KSB Hospital, they're working so hard to try to make sure that we're here and available and ready to care for our patients. What I'd like to do, Mayor, is just very briefly give you some thoughts about what's going on right here at KSB Hospital, as well as just a little bit about the southwest region and how that impacts our ability to provide care. And the statistics that I'm giving you are current all the way up to twelve-thirty today, so it's exactly what's going on at the top of the hill as we speak. Our ICU, which is a seven-bed unit, is completely full. That does change on an hourly basis, so there's a significant amount of movement in and out of that area. And we also have several of those patients that are on ventilators, so that's something that we have been watching very, very closely as we go through this pandemic. We have one open bed on our medical surgical floors, so the third and fourth floor of the hospital are for medical surgical patients. The third floor has been converted to a COVID unit, and that is full as of this time. So the impact is far-reaching when that happens. Most importantly, we went to a significant amount of preparation in the spring, in March and April, when the pandemic first started. And we received very, very little activity here at KSB. As you heard from what I just reported, that's not the case now, the activity is very, very high. However, the planning that we did in the spring has positioned us very well to be ready for this. So we have the capability of doubling our bed count. We can get almost up to a hundred beds if the situation requires that. And what we have done within the last two weeks is, for the first time since the nineteen-eighties, we've had some double occupancy in beds. Now, so far, that has primarily been restricted to situations that really made sense, for example, a, a mother and a daughter, or a husband and wife. So we've tried to stay with that because we know that's not something that anybody wants. The other part that we have that is something of a pinch point for us is not just the number of beds we have available, but the caregivers for those beds, the nurses, the CNAs, the LPNs, the housekeepers, the people that take care of people when they're admitted. And our employee population has very much mirrored the general population. We've had over fifty people that have been sidelined, not necessarily that are COVID positive, but that have been quarantined because of contact with people that are, that are COVID positive. So all of those things come together to create a very tight bed situation for us. The other impact that that has for the services that we offer are on our elective surgeries. One of the things that happened in the spring is the governor pushed out a mandate that said that all elective surgeries had to be canceled. And you can imagine that can be quite harmful for some patients, as well as just continuing to tolerate some pain levels that nobody wants to see have to go through. We've not had that mandate this time. However, when we have elective surgeries that are scheduled, and if that person is anticipated to need an inpatient stay after the surgery, for example, for pain control, then we have to make sure that we have an open bed before that surgery starts. And so I'm just incredibly proud of our nursing team, our nurse leadership, and the way that they're taking all of these multiple factors and putting them all into the bowl and coming out with something that is a safe environment for our patients. So that's pretty much where we are here at KSB. The other message that I want to make sure we put out there is that we're here for our patients, both in the hospital and the emergency department and in our physician offices. We have the capacity to help you, and the last thing that we want is for someone to be setting home, perhaps with chest pain, and they decide not to come into the hospital because they think we're too busy, or we don't have the ability to take care of them. We don't want to have any patients get into a situation where it gets worse because they wait too long. The other item, Mayor, that you asked me to speak about is the surge capacity for a region in northwest Illinois. And for us, most of our transfers go to one of three Rockford hospitals. I was on a call last week with those hospitals, and their ability to accept those transfers is becoming very compromised. They're in a situation where their beds are full. So if we have a patient that we need to send out and they don't have the ability to receive and care for that patient, then we have to redial that thought process and take care of those patients in a safe way right here at home. They even talked about the possibility of a reverse transfer situation, where some Rockford hospitals, because of their capacity, if there were open beds in the region, perhaps some of those patients could be moved around northwest Illinois. We're not there yet, but I tell you that just to talk about the collaborative way that all of the hospitals in our area are working together. So I think those are the key points, Mayor, I'm certainly open to any questions that you or the council members might have. As you mentioned in your preliminary remarks, we're watching very, very closely the activity that's going on at the Dixon Correctional Center, as well as in congregate living, and for us, that includes Mablee, Kreider, and just as importantly, our long-term care facilities that are in Lee and southern Ogo County. Those situations are also very dynamic and they can change very, very quickly, and our hospital has to be prepared to take a significant influx in a short period of time from those types of settings. So I hope that helps, Mayor, with some of the initial info, what did I miss that you want to make sure that I cover?
No, I think, I think that was very helpful. You talked a little bit about our, our current capacity, I remember from a meeting earlier this week, you were talking about, about eighty-five percent ability to handle, but as you mentioned, you have the ability to surge that as needed. And you talked a little bit about the ICU, certainly things that you can handle, but also much different levels than we've seen at any point in the pandemic up till now.
That's correct.
Alright, well, thank you very much, David, I appreciate you stepping out, I'm gonna let you get back to your work, we appreciate your comment.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, David.
Alright, again, so, so that is some of the things that we've been hearing in this past week as we have our regional leaders' meetings and understand, as they have been throughout this, you know, what's going on in the region and what, what's going on in Dixon, as that changes, our need to inform the public about what emergent factors are out there has changed as well. And so with that, I want to turn it over to Kathy Ferguson from our Lee County Health Department. I sent her a few questions to have ready to answer for us today. I know she's been talking about them before, but they are specifically related to what's different in our region now, as she's been talking about to us for the past week or two, especially coming off some of the activity we saw at Halloween, and how that kind of informs us of what we could expect at the much bigger Thanksgiving holiday, which on several orders of magnitude is culturally more important and socially active than Halloween. So Kathy, with that, I want to turn it over to you.
Thank you. You had asked about family gatherings in particular, and if we have seen friends and family gatherings being a factor in the spread of the virus here locally, we're seeing that nationally, that's why you're hearing state officials and federal officials talking about the holidays and how important as, as much as it's not what any of us want, but it's best to forego gatherings with family members or friends from outside of your household, and that's true here. Same way, we have traced back cases locally to Halloween party, to a birthday party, to multiple weddings, and to friends' gatherings in homes. So we are definitely seeing that as an issue here. You also asked about Blackout Wednesday being one of the biggest drinking and partying nights of the year in Dixon, and your concern about if people could unknowingly be, be infected during those activities and then spread it during subsequent activities over the holiday weekend. And first, I, I want to say that people don't always exhibit symptoms, or sometimes they're very mild, and people may brush them off as allergies or a cold, but if, if symptoms do appear, it's usually four to five days after exposure on average. And then people are most infectious forty-eight hours before symptoms appear. So I think your concern is very valid. Technically, somebody could be exposed on Blackout Wednesday, and by the Friday after Thanksgiving, unknowingly passing on the virus, even though they, they aren't feeling sick yet. And that could really be tragic if they're passing it on at family gatherings where there are older relatives or high-risk relatives, and, and it just could have tragic consequences. And then finally, you asked about our staffing and contact tracing, and whether we're able to effectively track the spread of the virus. We receive positive reports from testing facilities directly like KSB. We also receive positive reports through our state reporting system. Our goal is to reach out to positive individuals within twenty-four hours of receiving the report. We're doing our best to keep up, I'm really proud of our staff, they're working countless hours trying to stay on top of this. But what we do when we reach a positive individual, we ask them about who they've been in close contact with back to two days prior to symptom onset. Then once we get those names, we contact those people who are considered close contacts, and we recommend, well, that they get tested, and we also place them in quarantine. By doing that, we're preventing further spread of the virus, because they're quarantined and staying home and not out amongst people. But the key is, we need people to be forthright with us, be honest about their activities, so that we can do effective contact tracing. Because if we don't have that information, it's, it really deters our ability to contact trace and reduce the spread. Happy to answer any other questions.
I have a question. Hi Kathy, Dennis.
Hi.
I appreciate your time today and the hard work that your organization is doing. But for my purpose, I, I'm trying to make sure that the public understands my position in this situation, and it's that we are working to make everyone safe and have a better time of not getting COVID. But what I just heard you say in my, that's what I want to clarify with you. You're saying that we shouldn't have outside members of our household come in for a party, even at Thanksgiving, even if it's under ten people. So we, we should stay within our natural or normal number of people within the household, is that, is that what you said?
That's what we are recommending.
Thank you.
So Kathy, you're not putting any number on it at this time, we're, we're not limiting it to a specific number of participants?
Well, we, the smaller the better, of course. Our, our recommendation is your immediate household. I can't in good conscience say you can have up to ten people if six of them are from a different household. I hope that makes sense.
It's very clear, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, unless I have anything else, thank you very much, Kathy, I know you have a lot of work to get back to.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. So now I'm gonna talk a little bit about next week, and then we're gonna talk a little bit about some of the input and public comment we've got, because that is very important. And I assure everyone we have been listening, I know up to at least probably about noon today, I had, to my knowledge, answered every phone call and direct email, or even Facebook messages to my personal page I had received, we're trying very much to keep up with it. Explain to people what's emergent about this coming week, that might not necessarily be as much of a risk the week after Thanksgiving or the week before Thanksgiving. So let me talk a little bit about this Thanksgiving. So everyone knows some of the cultural elements in play, for example, it's one of the biggest travel holidays of the year, I think that needs no explanation. It's one of the biggest gathering days of the year, you know, sometimes rivaling Christmas. In terms of the shopping, certainly that's been mitigated by the amount of online shopping, for better or for worse, that happens in America now, that is a huge cultural change. But it's still a dynamic, and in, in as much as we want people to shop local, and we want them to keep their money in Dixon and support Dixon businesses, which have been suffering during this pandemic, we want people to be shopping and shopping safely. So that is a dynamic that comes into play, especially for those who choose to support their community and shop local. So that's a dynamic. Obviously, we know about college kids coming home, Dixon is a bedroom hometown community, so that means we oftentimes have an influx of people traveling, whether that's aunts, uncles, family members, brothers, sisters, and especially college students. You know, I can tell you myself, as a business owner, every time Thanksgiving comes around, I got some of the, my former employees who are coming home from school and they want some hours, because they're around, it, it's just a common dynamic in town. Some dynamic, one dynamic you might know and might not know about, which is one of the things covered potentially in this ordinance, is the concept of Blackout Wednesday. So for those who don't know, the biggest drinking and partying night of the year in Dixon, rivaling St. Patty's Day, rivaling New, uh, uh, New Year's Eve, is the night before, the night before Thanksgiving, and that's because there's so many family coming back in town, friends, relatives who haven't seen each other in a long time, college buddies, seeing people who are back home, and they all go out and they want to party, have a couple drinks, talk, socialize, it is a huge cultural dynamic. The problem for that particular dynamic this year is that at the timetable, as I was asking Kathy about, seems very disturbingly packed in front of that period of holiday travel, and that period of holiday gatherings with friends, with families. And unlike Halloween, which is very much a younger person's holiday, Thanksgiving is culturally much older members of the family that are involved. It's times to see grandparents and parents, aunts and uncles. You know, in my case, I was deployed for nearly a year, and I haven't seen my own grandmother probably in almost two years, I was very much looking forward to that. Unfortunately, my family on, both in Wisconsin and locally, has chosen to not do that quite yet, we're gonna push it off to Christmas or later for the safety of people like my grandmother and other older members of the family, who very much want to be part of Thanksgiving and other holiday gatherings. So those people who do choose, and we know there, there will be some who choose to party or drink as part of that dynamic, as spread happens like it did Halloween, they will be timetabled perfectly for the holiday shopping and gathering season. And that is a dynamic we have to be aware of, and it's a dynamic that's different than this week and the week before, or the week after Thanksgiving. And, and that is one of the emergent things we're here to talk about. So in coming to understand that, the council requested to know what kind of options we have, the first one being informational. And on that, I have some very good news to report. So for the past few days, as we've been dealing with this issue, myself, other members of the council have been personally reaching out to businesses, including workout facilities, some of our local bars and restaurants, talking to them about the unique factors involved in Thanksgiving, combined with the fact that the numbers in our area are affecting our local healthcare system differently than they did during the spring surge and differently during earlier parts of the pandemic, when certainly we were concerned, but we weren't, we weren't worried about these kind of exponential emergent factors. As, as David told us earlier from KSB, we very much believe we have this in terms of our medical capabilities under control, and as it continually climbs, which we expect for a little while longer, we still will. What we don't want to see is exponential growth, the kind of explosions that can happen after huge cultural gatherings like a Thanksgiving can present. So there is gonna be a multi-day period next week where we're gonna be very reliant on our business community and our citizens to recognize that and work with each other to prevent community spread, the kind that gets into nursing homes, the kind that gets into the healthcare facilities, the kind that's gotten into Dixon Correctional. Because that has the potential for exponential spread, we want to get through that window of a few days. So we proactively reached out, we have nearly a hundred percent success rate, I believe right now, a hundred percent success rate in talking to our businesses, the bars, the workout facilities, the eating facilities, explaining the dynamic of these few days. And many of them will be voluntarily, not just following the governor's orders, and I want to be clear that this, this emergency meeting is not related to the governor's orders. That is a separate thing related to the broader pandemic. Our meeting today is specifically looking at what we can do for the multi-day period around Thanksgiving for our Dixon community and our Dixon healthcare systems. They have understood that, and they have very much been willing to work with us on extra factors for those. There are some who told us they'd already known, were already thinking about it, I can think of a couple bars off the top of my head, who said, Mayor, we are already looking at that, we, we are already talking about being closed the whole week. If you, if you think some, there's some danger out there, it's done, we're, we're closing. And, well, you can't beat that. In, in terms of whether the government needs to do any enforcement, well, you don't need to when they're voluntarily complying and when they're appreciating the dangers and protecting the community themselves. And I can't thank them enough, the past few days have been, had made me very proud as a mayor to watch some of these businesses, some of the exact same ones that, whose, whose very business models have been threatened by this pandemic, and by the long-term nature of the governor's orders, say, we got this, Mayor, we got these few days, we understand, we're working with you. And because of that, you know, I think it, it, it changes the nature of this meeting considerably in terms of what's necessary. You know, I did hear the rumors online about, you know, the city council is gonna try to fine family gatherings, that was never on the table, ever, you look at the faces of all the council members here, I understand when people get stressed and when all of the other orders that have been going around from, from the governor and other things are in play, you think maybe your city council's about that too, that was never in play, there, there was no chance we would ever want our officers who have built a good reputation in relationship with our community to go into somebody's family gathering and say, you have twelve people, or you have two households here, here's your ticket. Simply never gonna happen. What we were concerned about were the implications of, of liquor control and large parties and Blackout Wednesday. And believing that if we could tailor and, and stem the tide at the front end of all of these dynamics on the Thanksgiving weekend, we could save both people's personal lives, their ability to go to work, and our healthcare system, some impact that they otherwise would have had. I think based on the phenomenal response from the community, from our business community, that's no longer a concern of mine. Yes, there are gonna be household parties, just like at Halloween, that won't care about that impact, I understand that. We cannot control everybody, we can plead with them, but we, some, some of those we simply won't know about until after the fact. And those that we can work with ahead of time have been so good about working with us that it's changed the dynamic of what next week will look like. Their, their willingness to work with us has already had an impact on the factors affecting next, next Thanksgiving weekend. So again, many thanks to my business community. And so with that, as the stage, I want to lay out a couple of the options that we had talked about, hold on one second. And then I want to turn it over to talking a little bit about public comments, and seeing if anyone here in the council chambers wants to speak as well. Please give me one moment while I go through my notes. Okay. So at the Monday meeting, we talked about what we could do in terms of putting out information, which we've been doing a lot in the past, what we could do in terms of additional enforcement, if that was a road we wish to go down, specifically related to parties and liquor control. What we could do in terms of additional enforcement, if that was a road we wish to go down, specifically related to parties and liquor control. And try to come up with maybe a solution that would work. We also talked at that time about starting a very proactive outreach to our business community, and as I mentioned, that has been very successful. So the options on the table for today are, of course, we could pass the ordinances drafted, we've received the sample language. I think all of us, including our community, took one look at that and said, there is massive parts of that that just aren't a good fit, and some parts that quite frankly are probably unconstitutional and enforceable. That's just my opinion, I'm not a lawyer, and I'm a little biased because I'm a big supporter of the Second Amendment, but there you have it. And that is what a lot of our public comment has been focused on as well, both online, whether it's on Facebook or in the calls and messages I've had over the past few days. The second option is part of our standard legislative process, is to review the language, work on it, strip out what we don't want, and pass an ordinance in the future. In talking to some of my council members, if we went that option, I think the earliest we would be looking at is next week, or maybe even wait until after the Thanksgiving period to see whether we think this is needed for at all in the future. And just so the public knows, this, this sample ordinance sent to us, as I mentioned, not written locally, it's meant to cover a wide array, you know, it mentions epidemics, but it's also for civic uprising, civil wars, if the Russians invaded. All of these crazy scenarios that are very rare, hardly ever used, and that's why the language is so broad. So that, that's not all related to epidemics. The part about large gatherings, liquor control, those are the only really parts that would be directly related, I think, to our current situation. The last option is instead of doing this, especially based on our support in the business community, is we could simply do an informational resolution. I know we've had a lot of people watching this paying attention, have already seen and maybe understand the different nature of the dynamic and dynamics of the pandemic in Dixon now, as opposed to the previous nine, ten months. So I think informationally, we've already had a lot of success with our business community and with the public. And in that option, we would simply, I would perhaps simply do a non-binding marital proclamation, talking about the dangers of Thanksgiving week and what people can do to keep their family and their community safe. And ask their, their support for some of these recommendations. The other option is we could do an also non-binding council resolution at the beginning of next week, that would say very similar language. And essentially, it would be us asking and begging any of those families in our community who are willing to postpone family gatherings and, and parties and drinking holidays, to please do it. It will make an impact for these critical four, four or five days, it really will, especially those at the front end. Because what we don't want is to have a bunch of parties and drinking on Tuesday and Wednesday, that produces some mini outbreaks. But then those people go shopping, they go to family gatherings, they travel around to different states or different parts of Illinois and cause outbreaks. So that, that is some of the options before us. I'm gonna talk a little bit now about some of the public comment. So due to the governor's limitations, we are limited to ten people in the council chamber. I did intend to go out and speak with people if we had more than that, but we only have three members of the public here. So I, I'm gonna talk about one of the other options we gave, which is to send us email comments, of course, we've already had the phone calls and many of those and the Facebook option, but I'm gonna read through some of the names of people who have sent comments, I'm gonna read a few samples of those. And then before I read through all of them, I'm gonna invite some public comment from those who have, who did the work to show up at the council chambers, see if they wanted to speak into the record. And then I'm gonna turn it over to the council for a little bit of discussion and to see whether this is, of those three options, which one they're interested. Before any vote, if any vote were to happen, which I do not believe is likely right now, for any final vote, I think we're mostly focused on language. I would again have another public comment period and I would read more of these into the record. So I'm gonna do that real briefly. Thank you for my, for your patience, members of the council. So I have had messages from Ann Norden, Liz Hall, Julia Kibble, Sarah Batswitch, please, I apologize if I ruin that last name, I know it happens to me all the time. Corey Miller, Sandra Copeland, Rebecca Soffolow, Amber, oh, there's last name, Kuster, Lisa Dively, Ken Norden, Peter Knudsen, C. Smith, Aaron Wolford, Aaron Chandler, Dory Coffey, Brian Monk, Andrea Summers, Carolyn Sweeney, Jocelyn Kavanaugh, Eric Brown. Mark Swarbrook. So I'm gonna read a couple of those now. If needed later, if we're gonna choose to act, I will read them all into the record, but I'm gonna read a couple of these as samples, the general gist of them, as you can imagine, has been not supportive to varying degrees of the ordinance as written, and in most cases to the ordinance at all. So this is from Ann Norden, I'm writing this letter of concern as to why you are having thought of executive order and shutting things down and limiting sales. This is clearly a state of government overreach. It is not your place or job to tell me, a taxpaying citizen, what to do with my time, money, or life, or my life. It is your job to make sure our community is thriving, gaining revenue and helping it succeed. You are elected officials and will find out sooner than later on where everyone stands within your governmental overreach and power. You will find yourself not being on another ballot or re-elected. It is not your jury, it is not your job to worry about one's health. It is your job to worry about our community becoming financially strong. People die every day. This isn't just about COVID because now you're talking about businesses shutting down again and limiting sales. You are people, you are killing people slowly by your decision-making without the public's knowledge. I think I said that right, my apologies. My folks who are eighty years old, who rarely get on social media, had no idea this was even happening. Way to keep the city taxpayers who line your pockets kept in the dark. You failed us in more ways than one, don't talk about your riverfront and things you want for the city of Dixon because there will be nothing left. People are already leaving this city and this state, the generations to come will want nothing to do with this place. Our hospitals are there and life will be what it will be, with or without COVID. This is not a state of emergency, all you want to do is talk about COVID scare tactics, but the reality of it is, we have more survival rate than deaths. How about we talk about well-being, not filling our heads with fear? Do you ever say or promote things to benefit someone's everyday life? You are playing with individuals' mental states, financial situation, and their families. It's becoming clear what you are really going for and we aren't having it anymore, freedom over fear, sincerely, Ann Norden. Alright. So that was a longer one, I'll read a, a shorter one. This is from Julius Legter, hello, I would like to express that I do not agree with the proposed ordinance to give the mayor executive authority in case of a state of emergency, thank you, Julius Legter. Now I'll read one last one for now, before we open for discussion again, if we choose to act, I will, I will continue reading. This is from Sarah Batswitch, again, my apologies if I did not pronounce your name correctly, good evening. I'm writing as a concerned citizen of Dixon. I have seen about the special council meeting coming up and the desire to pass an ordinance related to a local designation of emergency. After reading what the council would like to put in this ordinance, it concerns me greatly. Giving executive powers to implement curfews, stop gun and ammo sales, and fine people for not complying seems quite extreme. What is the rush to hold this meeting and get something like this passed so quickly without even giving a lot of the citizens in this town a chance to know what is happening? Please listen to many of your concerned citizens who are aware of this and vote no on rushing this amendment through, sincerely, Sarah. Alright, at this time, do I have any public comment? Please, is my microphone working? If it's not, you can come up to my computer. You can come up, all you need to do is state your name, you do not need to state where you live or anything else, just state your name into the record.
The microphone is muted, okay, so.
Is, can you hear me?
No.
Can you hear her?
I can hear.
I can hear you, if you could, if you could.
Please. Be closer to the microphone.
Phone right in front of you. And I'm gonna mute myself, and if you'll state your name, the floor is yours. And, and you have three minutes, although if you need a little more time than that, just let me know, and I'm gonna mute myself, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. My name is Dee Martinez, and I just found out about this this morning by chance, when I happened to glance at the newspaper, and I was very alarmed that the city was considering passing this ordinance. I have been, become increasingly alarmed, as many people have, with government overreach in response to a virus that kills, that is the most important fact, it kills about one percent to three percent, I don't even know what the official number is at this point, but a very low amount compared to the rate of infection, so most people, the vast majority of people recover from this virus, but the toll, the emotional toll, the financial toll, even the health of, of the citizens of the United States period has been greatly impacted. I looked up causes of death on the CDC website this morning for, I looked up twenty nineteen. Heart disease, deaths last year, six thousand, six hundred fifty-five thousand, three hundred eighty-one. Cancer, five hundred ninety-nine thousand, two hundred seventy-four. Accidents, one hundred sixty-seven thousand, one hundred twenty-seven. Chronic lower respiratory diseases, one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, four hundred eighty-six. This was nationwide, we hit two hundred and fifty thousand official, because we all know that the numbers have been inflated a little bit in certain cases. Deaths, which does not warrant the response that we're seeing. The reason why I'm against the city of Dixon's proposed ordinance is because it would codify for future events, not just this event. The ability for whatever mayor in the future to enact emergency orders bypassing the normal right of the citizens to be able to decide whether or not they agree with the response of the government. It is up to the government to listen to the people rather than impose rules and ordinances, and I think the vast majority of people have spoken out saying that they disagree with this ordinance being passed. There is no need for it, it's unfortunate if the hospitals become overwhelmed. It is an unfortunate thing, you know, and people, people might suffer because of that, but not to the extent that they're suffering because of the repercussions of the mandates that have been passed down nationwide, down to the local level. We are built on local businesses. Fail, this city fails. And besides that, this is not, this is not what I want my grandson to grow up in, this is not what I want my child to, this is not a world that I want my child to grow up in, full of, of, of the government thinking that they need, they can impose rules on people for their own benefit. What did they say, that the road to hell is paved with good intentions? You know, maybe, maybe people, maybe politicians, some of them actually do care about the well-being of their citizens, but we should not have to give up our civil liberties for, you know, a miniscule amount of deaths in the, in the grand scheme of things. That's, that's all I have to say at this time.
Mayor, council, thank you, I know most of you here, Chris Bishop, nine oh four Chicago Avenue. I originally came down here to talk to you, or basically talk about my displeasure of what I saw this ordinance possibly doing with the local state of emergency. I, I thank the mayor, because after hearing you talk through it, I think hopefully most people understand that there's only parts of that that the council is really looking at doing, which I think is much clearer for most of us. So, and instead of really hitting on those and the questions that I had on that, I think the point that I would make to the council is, people have a choice, the mayor even brought up his own family, they've decided they're not going to meet. My family has a choice whether or not we're going to meet, people in the public have a choice whether or not they're going to go to an establishment where people they don't know are going to be there in order to get COVID, and then they have to make a choice, are they now going to go see their families? So my suggestion is, the non-binding resolution sounds really great in working with businesses, because you say that they're following along. And I would ask the citizens that are listening to this, to call their family members that are coming to family events and express if you're gonna go out and you're gonna be around people that you do not know, and you do not know where they've been, to stay away from grandma, grandpa, mom, dad, whoever it is. The choice is those people, the people and the families that are involved. Once again, I keep hearing the saying of overreach from the government. I don't believe the city of Dixon necessarily is, is trying to do that, but you can also see just by the way the reaction has been to what was sent out earlier for this particular meeting, people are worried about that right now. And, and I'm being one of them, I, I do not wanna see people telling me exactly what to do in the United States, in the city of Dixon, I don't. I understand that COVID is a real thing that people are having issues with, that is clear. But I asked the council to try to give people a choice to decide what to do, and I stress once again to the folks that are watching this at home, talk to your family, if this is something that could potentially cause life-threatening things to your family, have that conversation, that, I think that's, a lot of this comes down to you have to draw your line even with the old people that are in your family, and if they're not doing things that you're comfortable with, unfortunately, you're gonna have to have that conversation and tell them you're not welcome. I appreciate all the things that you guys are trying to do. Once again, for me, I would, I would really hope that we would look at the non-binding resolution and working with businesses as opposed to going into this local state of emergency and, and closing down another business. Well, maybe they, they're willing to do it themselves or to regulate some of the things that are going on, I appreciate the time, thank you.
Now some people, watchers might not believe me, but I do.
Mayor, could you unmute your, unmute, thank you.
So I wanna thank everybody who spoke. I wanna thank those who submitted comments, and again, I say that very sincerely. This is very, this is something that's very community-wide and we need community support for whatever action we take if we are gonna get the kind of results that protect our community, that is easily the best way to accomplish anything. As our outreach to our business community has already shown. So with that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop my speechifying and start talking to the council. I've laid out some of those three options. Depending on how you would like to discuss them. The general feedback I've gotten from the council as we reviewed the sample ordinance is that as standing is not really an option for us. So unless, unless you disagree with that, the two options I'd like to hear from you about are, do we want to work on language for a non-binding resolution as we continue to inform our public of the dangers of, of those, those days next week where all those dynamics are in play? Do we want to look at stripping about, a bunch of the offensive language from the emergency powers and, and codifying that into an ordinance for use now and in the future? Or do you have some other path entirely that you would like to consider? And with that, I want to start hearing from my council members.
Who wants to start?
I'll go ahead. Have a little bit of a prepared statement, I think there's definite merit in, in an ordinance that we're talking about for any municipality, which is exactly the way that the state writ, has written it and sent it to us. I think the timing of it, obviously, right now comes when citizens feel, they've had plenty of personal regulations applied to them already. This ordinance will not get my support today, but I do think there could be merit at a time where it could be beneficial, it would be something that may be good to have on your books, but you hope to God that you never have to use. It's an, it could be an important tool for public safety in the future. But I'm of the strong belief that if we reach out to our citizens at any time of an emergency need, we'll receive that majority compliance and support. I've lived here my whole life, almost, and I have faith in the citizens of Dixon. Unfortunately, this pandemic has been really politicized for any of us to make a decision easy or acceptable by a majority level. We can only hope that through this specific process of vetting an idea or, or an option, that we have caught the attention of our community and make them fully understand the scope and severity of our local concern and help them take a greater role in, in uniting in its demise. More power is not what we seek. More uniformity is what I hope for today and all of our days ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, council. Would, would you be supportive of a resolution then, just a non-binding resolution of information that we've been talking about? Would, would you be supportive of a resolution then? Uh, just a non-binding resolution of information that we've been talking about? All right, understand.
I think I would be. I think that the efforts that we have made so far in personal reachouts to the businesses of concerns have been obviously very rewarding for both of us, that that, those that that made those um contacts. And to see that their compliance was very easy and understanding, that is, that's great, and that's what we need to do.
And and I want to thank you for joining in that effort. Um, it wasn't, like I said, there were people telling me, you know, why are you even reaching out? People aren't gonna care, and I disagree. That's why we, we launched that part of the initiative, is I think our community will respond when they understand that the dangers are a little different over this period. Um, and in the business community, I wasn't surprised to find that was the case, so I, I, thank you. Um, counselors?
Um, so I'd just like to kind of um voice my opinion and and my thoughts on some of this to clarify. I, I, I too did my best to um respond back to the comments that I have received. Um, and I do appreciate reaching, people reaching out to us as well. Um, we often say that, um, you know, that, that we are elected officials for a reason, and and we are supposed to be the will and the voice of the people, so I appreciate that. Um, what I will say also um is that I feel, this is my opinion, um, and I, I think I can speak for the majority of counsel, that passing that state of emergency in its entirety and in the language that it was the boilerplate per se from the Illinois Municipal League that was put forth, was never the intention of counsel. Um, I believe that we as counsel um need to do a better job communicating that to our public. I understand that we did have on the agenda that there was a specific caveat that says that this language would be tweaked. Um, it could be, and and was up for that discussion. But um I think that we need to do a better job communicating that bef- because the majority of the people that reached out to me were concerned about all of these liberties being taken away from them that were never, ever, ever going to be thought about um as part of our conversation. So um I will say that um that's my opinion. We gotta do a better job. We gotta do a better job of communicating. Um, secondly, um, we are a pro-business community. We, this council was first in this, I believe, region to um reach out and support our small business community in the forms of city grants. Actually, in the form of two hundred fifty thousand dollars of city grants. So I will say that um our actions are, are, are loud on how we feel and how we support um the small business of this community. And that is our priority and have continued to show that time and time again by um what we have done um in the wake of this pandemic. That being said, um I also believe that it is important that when things change and um information comes into us from our um health department and from our hospitals, it is our responsibility as, as elected officials to make sure our community understands that. And so um I, I think that that's why um I, I've kinda heard some pushback saying, you know, we haven't heard anything from anyone, and then all of a sudden we hear this really big, heavy language that comes out. Part of that's a misunderstanding, I believe, and part of that's also in the fact that um, you know, there are delicate lines to balance. Um, I will say that rather, I am not a political person, so um I, I'm a community person. I, I ran for this position because I care about this community, but I know that there are really charged political issues um that kinda go into play with this. And we also have, I, I want it to be as transparent as possible for the community to understand, that you also have to remember that there are millions of dollars of grants um that are also allocated that we have won in this community, and and this council and administration has done a heck of a job to apply for those things. And so all of those considerations have to be thought of when we are, we are um sharing information and and we are publicly saying, stating things. And so I just wanna, I just wanna make sure that people understand those dynamics as well. Um, and lastly, my personal opinion, um, when we have the, the the director or CEO of the hospital telling us that there potentially are situations where healthcare can get to a point very quickly where people with non-COVID-related issues, um, you know, may not be able to be transferred out so quickly. You know, when we're talking about the issue of COVID and we're talking about really the issue of healthcare, it, it goes so much smarter farther than talking about COVID. It goes into the, it goes into the capacity of the hospital and what they can do. And we are seeing overrun hospitals in our, in our larger regions potentially saying like, we can't take your patients, we can't take your call. And so that's, that's where red flags come to us and say, as community stewards, we have to step up and say, as a community, we gotta rally together to take care of one another. So um, I guess I just wanted to clearly state for the record and for this community watching, the, the, I appreciate your concern. That was never the intent of this council to do. Um, we are looking for getting um buy-in from the community and and really um uh support to try and make sure that we keep um our hospital running and we keep our um long-term care facilities going. And um all of those things are are big dynamics when you talk about Thanksgiving and the possible um layers of things that come up, come down the pipe from that. So I'm, I'm not in support of the emergency, the state of emergency. And truly, um, there is, as I agree with Councilman Veneer, there's a reason why that that language is on many municipalities' books. Take Utica, for example. Uh, you know, a tornado comes through and wipes out a, 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 a community, and um, you know, there are multiple things that come into play and, and it's, and so when you have those, those things um put together, that the mayor can come together and say, okay, we can step up and make a quick decision a- and 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 save for the safety of the community. Uh, uh, because people are asking me, why would anyone ever put that in that language? There are many municipalities around our area that currently have that language on there. Um, so while I do think that that is an opportunity for us to look at, I definitely don't think the time is now. And 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 so that going forward, um, I do believe that we're getting buy-in from our businesses. I do think that it, there is a, um, I also think that there's a responsibility on businesses' part to, to do their part to support this community. Um, so I'm hopeful that after these conversations that we've had, um, that people understand the significance of this situation. Um, so at this point in time, for me, I'd be more than happy to say that putting a mayoral proclamation or a council statement going forward and at, um, hopefully will, will um address this issue. But if not, then I think that we, and we continue to um have some serious issues come come to us and say like, we need, we need to, we need to look at things, then I think that we have to be a responsible council and address those issues.
Counselors?
Um, I guess I'll go. Dennis, you can bring up the last one. I'll start off by saying, you know, Lee, you talked about earlier how the community engagement and people, people speaking up. And that, and I think it was best encompassed yesterday when you and I were playing phone tag. And you started off by saying, how was your day? And then immediately go, don't answer that, never mind. I know how it is. Um, because I think all of us spent most of yesterday on our phones and taking calls and people asking questions. And and I had the same reaction when I read the ordinance. It was, you know, when it was discussed prior, we didn't know what it looked like, then we saw it from what the state sent. It's like, okay. Um, this is gonna, this is gonna be a twist on things. Um, and I think we all pretty much immediately backed off on what it was based off what that said. The, I think the, the council proclamation in due time, and and I do impress on people to hopefully be as safe as human, like, you know, be smart and be safe over the next week and a half. And, you know, I, I've owned a bar for the last ten years. I know what it's like that week. I know how that week goes. Um, it's not one or two nights, it's, you know, five or six. So I, I, I really hope that everybody really, really uh enjoys their Thanksgiving as safely as possible. The uh council proclamation, I think, for right now, and we also discussed the idea of, of a future ordinance um that has some, has some things in there that are, that hasn't even been fleshed out that we kinda talked about. Um, maybe down the road for a December meeting or something along those lines, but as of right now, no, once, once I read it, I was like, all right, whoa, and then all of a sudden, you know, the phone calls and the emails uh came where again, and you start, you know, it was, it was nice to see everybody all, you know, really taking weight in what their city is doing. But this isn't the way you wanna, you, this isn't the situation you wanna see that be the, the case of. You want to see it for the positive, not for the, not for the negative. So, um, i- in terms of what's gonna happen with this, I mean, obviously, this doesn't look like it's gonna be uh a vote to even worry about, because I don't think it was, it's even gonna be approached, so I'm not totally worried about that. Um, but yes, I'm just imparting just to please be safe, please be smart. That's the biggest I can ask. So, yeah, as we kinda flesh it out, probably over this next weekend, over the next week, we can kinda see what it's gonna look like in the coming months uh down the road.
Counselor Conson?
Thank you very much. Thanks for the previous speakers. I concur with my fellow councilman. My intent in this whole situation was to bring the people who were not being aware of the compliance and following through, and the endangerment that they were putting the rest of the community in and taking it so flippantly that they weren't going to comply because they don't have to comply. And no, you don't have to comply, but ninety percent of the restaurants and bars were doing the right thing, and the ten percent that weren't shouldn't be allowed to cause that detriment to our community. And I do take offense by, I apologize, I didn't write your name down, this first speaker that COVID is important. I have a brother that's probably not gonna make it as I speak to you about COVID. And it's not anything he did or didn't do. It's what other people didn't do or take the time to wanna wear a mask, stay six feet away, wash your hands, and not get in large gatherings. And it has nothing to do with the numbers of heart attacks and other issues in our community and the world. It's how it's attacking us now. So that, that given, I hope that your children and your grandchildren do live in a great community. And we are a great community, and our purpose was never, never to put controls on people. It was only to put people in a position to bring them into compliance so that they aren't necessarily unconsciously spreading this horrid disease. And I agree with um Councilman Oris, as most of the time I always do. It's fun to have a compatriot on the council and be at odds with the rest of you occasionally. I, I kinda like that. Keeps me going. And second, that we do need an, or we need some type of information to make us aware and what we're doing, and that's really what the mayor's issue was in the beginning. In my heart, I believe that that we need to be aware of the detriment that this disease can cause to each and every one of us. And here it is knocking him on my back door. And I'm not a person that usually talks about his personal life, but I'm gonna tell you now, it's serious and it's real. And you, if you want to ignore it, that's fine, but that's why our hospitals are full. That's why globally the place is full. And we should do everything we can to be respectful of each other. So that's all I have to say tonight, and I thank you.
All right, thank you, counselors. All right, um, so since there will be no, uh, no more action in terms of um either a proclamation, proclamation or resolution, uh, I will, I will try to draft up some language or ask for some of your input and draft up some language um and try to talk to you about that. Uh, in th- in terms of the community's attention, uh, for better and for worse, I think we have that. Hopefully enough of them uh will understand what we're trying to do here and uh you know, open their minds a little to what we're trying to say and think about it. And at the end of the day, we can't force individual families, uh, and have no intention of forcing individual families um on how they're gonna make that decision. Uh, for the, for the liquor control part, um, there is no need for enforcement, because the moment I started talking to the bars about Blackout Wednesday and the, and and my concerns with them in terms of crowds, and they understood. You know, as Ryan mentioned, who's also a bar owner, m- many people in the community might not know what a cultural event that is in Dixon and how big of a partying and drinking day that is. Um, but for, but the bars knew, and they understood completely, and they've been very supportive of working with us. And in many cases, I think the bars were scared of it too, because they understood if they had crowds uh and their employees would be at much higher risk, they themselves would be at much higher risk. And at the end of the day, if they got COVID throughout their staff, they might have made money for one night, but then they might have been closed for a while as, as it tore through their business. Uh, and I think that's one of the other reasons they were so supportive of what we were trying to do, is they, they don't want it in their establishments either. So, so based on the part where we would have some influence, which is with, with our um with, with some of our facilities that would have been part of party scenes or drinking scenes, based on the fact that they're already on board, um, I think we craft our language more towards our families and ask them, beg them, really, especially those who have at-risk portions who would otherwise be attending. And and we alert them to the dangers of Thanksgiving. We alert them to the fact that there will be other dynamics in play that could bring sickness into their household, even if they were following most of the normal rules, that next week will be different. Next week, because of the intense amount of social and cultural gathering and activities happening, it, it won't be like a normal week. It won't be a gradual spread. And if they are willing to make that sacrifice of that cultural event in their family, um, they will be helping their community and and they very well might be helping their families. And that's what the language I would draft would be geared towards. It is, at the end of the day, an ask. Uh, as leaders, especially in, in our form of government, sometimes the ask is the most powerful thing you can do. And in the case of our business community, they have responded, and they have responded incredibly well. And if our family communities respond half as well, um, we will dramatically change what otherwise would have happened in Dixon um next week. Because awareness and knowledge breed results. People do react. And that's one of the reasons we were so uh public with, with this whole meeting and what we were trying to discuss. I know there's people out there who genuinely think we had memorized all the lang- we knew the language ahead of time. Uh, we presented to the public and we said, we're gonna put these things on you, and it's gonna happen right now. And that's not at all how this ordinance works. Uh, but part of the legislative process, when the eyes are on you, is um you have to do more explaining. And to your point, Mary, in terms of explanations, we wouldn't have needed nearly this much explanation for a normal event or for a normal ordinance. We would have got it. We would have changed it. We would have debated it. We might have shot it down. We might have passed it in the future. And oftentimes, people don't care. And people cared and paid attention to this one, and quite frankly, I'm glad. Both as a Second Amendment fighter myself and as an advocate of open, transparent government, I know it might be uncomfortable, but I like to see people involved. I like to see people, see people sending a message to know what's on agendas. Um, I wish they did that for the budget season. Uh, we went through our budget meetings and I, I think I had I, I think I had two people comment on it, and that's probably one of the most important, powerful documents we do of the year. Um, so to those of you listening, thank you for staying tuned, and please stay tuned, because your government will run better if you're this involved all the time. So with that, uh, I, I'm not gonna read the rest of these into the public comments, and we will not be at, acting. There will be an opportunity in the future if they want to come. Um, or if we choose to act on this, where I will either read it into the public record, or they will get an opportunity to speak. I want the public to know that all of those have been emailed and sent to the council members. You'll see some of them nodding their heads. We, we've been in communication about that, and the council was asked to read them as part of the council packet and preparing for the meeting. Uh, so the council has read them. I have read them. So we are listening to you, and that's one thing I wanna end with. For those who, who thought we were just trying to pull something over and it's about power, I'll be blunt, you couldn't be more wrong. We, we're trying to take care of our community, inform the community, and there's a reason we haven't been talking about as much the healthcare impacts in Dixon up till now, because it changed in the past few weeks. This surge has been affecting our community in a way the spring surge never did. And when you combine that with that time period around Thanksgiving, any good leader is going to look at their options and start talking to the community and say, community, this is what is happening. I want to thank again those in the business community, uh, including many who were very publicly opposed to what the governor's doing, who for us locally and who for the Dixon community have jumped right on board. Uh, it was very powerful and it's gonna, it's very much appreciative. And with that, unless there's anything else from the council, um, I don't have, go ahead.
I do have Facebook comments.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Let's let's read them. Sorry, I'm not following on Facebook, so.
That's okay. I, the only comments I I'm reading are the ones that were in reply to my comment in the beginning.
Sure.
There's some ongoing conversations happening as well.
There's kind of lots of conversations, but if it wasn't replied to my first comment, I'm not reading that. The ones I have here are just names of people. I have Deanne White, Linda LeBlanc Parks, Suzanne Bowman, Nikki Suzie, Lisa Jo Baccola, Erica Villa, Ervia, Cammy Smith, Gabe Billyott, and Matt Chandler. That's the only thing they did was give their names, but they were in my public commentary report, so I wanted to say those.
Okay, just for the public watching along on Facebook, um, while we're not by law required to uh, you know, read Facebook comments for this coronavirus era, we've been doing it uh, because we feel it's appropriate. And so during council meetings, the city clerk will, in the middle of the Facebook thread where, you know, we welcome discussion, please keep it as polite as possible, uh, but there will be an official post from the, from the city asking for comment in the thread. And if you respond to that thread, uh, we ask that you not engage in discussion or debate on that thread. You can do that on the regular thread. Specifically, comments that you are interested in um, reading into the record. While we are online and remote, we want to try to work with you and read those into those records, because you can be heard. I will tell you, um, I've had no council meetings since we've done this that have reached our capacity of 10 people. So don't believe you won't be welcome. The council chambers are open. That is why I'm in them to make sure the council chambers stay open and so that members of the public can talk to me before the meeting if they so desire. And so they can speak into the public record and to the public if they so desire. Uh, even for this meeting today, when we had tons of of online comment and discussion, I have three members of the public in the building. Three members felt it was important enough that they have come up here, um, and they have watched. So uh, you're welcome. You're always welcome for any meeting to come. Uh, talk to the council beforehand and speak into public comment if you want. A- any other comments beforehand?
There's no comments on the YouTube stream either.
Okay, thank you.
Because I had that open just in case.
I I do have one comment from from city, from uh, from the public here.
You have to unmute her.
Sorry.
Yeah, you're going to have to unmute it. I'm sorry.
I I would just ask that the the city please do a better job of informing the public of these hearings because, like I said, I'm I'm not on social media at all. And I just happened to glance through the newspaper. So had I not done that, I would not have known that this meeting was taking place at all. And I think that probably holds true for at least some people.
Sure.
So I I don't know what could be done to make sure that the public is aware that these meetings are taking place and they don't feel like one.
Right, right. And um, you know, that's a great point. Just so the public knows, our regular meetings are the first and third Monday of every month, the first and third Monday of every month. Um, we did talk about this meeting at that normal Monday meeting earlier this week. I talked about it on my radio interview on Tuesday. We made sure the radio and the newspaper were covering it. Um, and we talked about the fact that we we very well might not take action at the meeting. So that way, people who wanted to comment or input um, would see the final version of whatever language we did if we went that route um, and have time to reply. So we want you to know, we are listening to you. We understand that. We do special meetings very rarely, precisely because we want to keep a regular calendar that you can attend uh, if you so choose.
We do have a calendar, Mayor, that the city clerk has.
Yes.
That young woman should ask Keisha for today, and then she would have a listing of when our meetings are.
And other than very rare circumstances, when we do have special meetings, so the public knows, they are generally used to discuss things so that we are ready for them by the, for action by the next meeting. They sometimes do include um, votes as well. But oftentimes, you'll see a result like you did today, which is where we're coming together, because we need to address something quickly and we need extra discussion. But that doesn't necessarily mean there will be a vote. So uh, any other input from my council before we sign off?
I mean, take the opportunity this year. You don't have to invite that family member that, you know, your kids stand every other year.
Get a bottle of wild turkey and stay home.
Oh my, oh. And and I do, we do make that ask on the faculty and the community. It is an ask, um, but we do ask it, and we plead with you. If you find it in yourself and your family to postpone your gatherings for this year, you might make a difference within your family and you might make a difference within the community. And for that percentage that is at risk, you might make a very drastic impact. So.
I have one thing to say, two things actually. Counselor Constance, I, I just want to let you know that I'm praying for your brother. And that I am very sorry to hear that. And and I am sending big, you know, big prayers to you and your family. My son um, contracted COVID nineteen, and he is doing, um, I'm officially out of quarantine now, but he is doing well, and it's a very scary thing. Um, but what I wanted to share with you is, is we have a a a neighborhood, um, a couple of boys. They all rake leaves together, wearing masks and um, to make money. I mean, so they raked a couple neighbors' leaves and prior to my son being contagious, prior to my son having symptoms, he was around two boys to do this. What I wanted to share with you was the conversation, the phone call that I have to make. And I, just to understand this, um, a family member of one of those boys, his father passed away from COVID. He's thirteen years old and he lost his dad to COVID. The dad was forty-two years old or forty-three. So when I had to call that mother and say to her, potentially my son exposed your son to COVID nineteen, and he just lost his dad six months earlier, let me tell you, it was a, I I I dreaded that phone call. I'm fortunate, and we are all fortunate that we are all well and healthy. Um, and that neighbor boy is all well and healthy. But I I want to impact the humanity side of this. Just be a good neighbor. Care about your neighbor. That's what this is all about, is just caring about people that in your community. And 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 I guess I just wanted to share that human side of this, so it didn't have to be so darn political. And that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Mary.
Good job, council. Very proud of our actions here today.
The members of the public, if you want to continue, please.
Should we close the meeting before signing off?
Yeah, we do need a motion. Thank you. I got so distracted. Let's return to parliamentary order.
All right.
I will need a motion to adjourn.
I move special council meeting of Thursday, November nineteenth, two thousand twenty, be adjourned to meet in regular session on Monday, December seventh, two thousand twenty, at five thirty PM in the council chambers at City Hall via electronic means.
Motion, Marshall.
Second.
I have a second veneer. Can I have a a roll call from the city clerk, please?
Councilman Veneer?
Yes.
Councilman Cassidy?
Aye.
Councilman Marshall?
Yes.
Councilman Oris?
Aye.
Mayor Elano?
Aye, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Have a great Thanksgiving.
Thank you all for tuning in. Have a great Thanksgiving.
Now I have to get off of here.